I would like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin.
Here.
Muncie. Leo.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Jamie, did you hear from Councilman Muncie or anything?
I did not.
Okay, well, hopefully he'll, he'll, he'll join us. I won't bother with an excused absence at this point. We'll see if he shows up. Does anyone have any agenda changes, additions or deletions? Hearing none. I don't believe we have any guest speakers on our agenda. Covers item four. We are now at public comment. Would you please limit your public comment to agenda items only and limit your remarks to three minutes? Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to make public comment on agenda items tonight? Okay. Seeing no one in the audience with comment, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to make a public comment on an agenda item? Clerk shows no one. All right. I'm going to close item five. That will take us to six discussion items. Six A, we have invasive species, the hemlock woolly adelgid. This discussion is going to be hosted by our friends from the Alleghan County Conservation District. You will see a start of it on page two of your packet. Ryan, do you want to make an introduction?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have the pleasure of having Mr. Brian Pausma with us, the Director of the Alleghan County Conservation District, and he's gonna share with us some information about the hemlock woolly adelgid and talk about maybe the expense that the city would might want to incur for treating this insect. So, Brian, please.
Thank you. So I'll just give you a brief overview of why we care about HWA. So this is a really small insect. There's some photos up here. You can see that sucks sap from the base of needles on hemlock trees. Eventually, they lose those needles and will typically die in four to 10 years after infestation, depending on, you know, the size and the health of the tree. So this is something you'll see typically progress from the bottom of the tree upwards, and then they'll eventually just kind of be dead trees standing. And next slide, please. So here's a look at the survey that we had conducted through ODC Network on city properties. So this is about one hundred and fifty-four acres, and they identified forty-two hundred hemlock trees that should be treated. So this is large and small hemlock trees, and for the most part, the infestation was relatively new, meaning that there wasn't excessive defoliation of these trees, so they're all fairly healthy. And that's a really critical piece of this treatment protocol is catching it early. And so you can see up here on this heat map where those trees are mostly located, sort of clustered together. And next slide, please. So typically, when we're going to talk about treatment of invasive species, we want to make sure that we're approaching this holistically and not just spraying a bunch of pesticide or what have you and, and leaving it. So some of the other things that I would encourage the city to consider in the coming years are forest management planning specifically for HWA, and that will involve thinning stands so that the most healthy trees are given more sunlight to be productive and to be a little bit stronger and resistant to infection or infestation. And then considering ways that maybe a dying stand would be replaced or restored. So that would be through selecting species that cover the same sorts of niche. So like another evergreen species or something that could facilitate the same ecosystem services as a hemlock. The other portion is educational efforts, so talking to your private landowners and making sure that they're aware of management strategies for HWA and how to rent spread through, you know, making sure that their equipment is clean if they're chopping trees between sites or things like that. Something to keep an eye on that's not currently available is biological control. So this is when a native predator or a non-native predator of HWA is introduced. In some cases, this is a fungus that might only attack HWA, or it could be another species that physically eats them or what have you. There is ongoing research in that area and some developments upcoming, so that's something to keep an eye on. And next slide, please. So the reason that I'm talking about these other strategies is that chemical control is not the be all end all here. It is a very powerful tool in our toolbox, but it will need to be repeated time to time. So what can be used right now is a chemical called amitocloprid. And so this is really good for new infestations because it takes a while to be absorbed into the trees, but it lasts for up to seven years, so you don't have to retreat the same tree over and over again year to year. This only works when a tree is still healthy. So right now, this is a really good option for those city parcels. If the infestation progresses and there's more defoliation of those trees, they're less healthy, then a short-term option is the only option available. That's that other chemical up there. And that really only lasts a year or two before re-treatment is necessary. So that's why this, I guess, the survey and this bid is so timely because we're catching it at a really good point, I think, in the Sagatuck area. And with those five to seven years, if you decide to use this treatment now, that's a really good timeframe to start your forest management planning and those other educational efforts to help address the issue as well. So my last slide here is the bids that we received for this project. You'll notice here that there was a bid from a Conservation District strike team that was not the lowest bid, and so I think you've gotten there's a really good price here from GEI Consultants at forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars for treating all of the trees with that amitocloprid chemical. Any questions?
Um, with the forty-four thousand dollar bid, do they help with any educational efforts to let private homeowners know in the area that there are treatment options that they can provide, but they would have to pay for them themselves?
That wouldn't be a part of GEI Consultants' work. We're currently working with a number of private landowners in the area, and we've also provided some cost share money for that for those landowners. We're paying for half the treatment if they're interested, so. And we've also done survey for those plans.
I have a question. Are our state and local neighbors taking any actions, you know, immediately adjacent to, to our areas?
Yeah, primarily to the north. So a lot of state grants are focusing on the northern part of the lake shore, down to about Ottawa County is where most of that grant money is focused right now.
I guess my concern was, you know, if we had problems, I've seen the DNR guys in the Sagatuck Dune State Park, but I don't know if they're just cataloging or if they're actually active in treatment at this stage, but obviously, if, if, if it's not being taken care of near us, it's going to undermine our efforts. So I'm just curious if you've got any intel on that.
Yeah. One thing to keep in mind on that note is that this will be a problem in perpetuity.
Right.
And so regardless, there's, there's not really a hope for eradication at this point. It is a control.
Okay.
So in that forest management planning, really identifying the stands that are important to the Sagatuck area and focusing on keeping them alive and maybe replacing or restoring other areas is a strategy you want to approach in the future.
So to be clear, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure you understand. So you're saying that basically it doesn't really matter if people are around you are treating it because we're going to be having to do it over and over again every 10 years or whatever it is with current. So really, that's not a factor to consider. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here today. Could you go back to slide three, please? Thank you. So to confirm is all city property that this inventory was done on, correct?
Yeah.
So the four thousand, two hundred and twelve hemlocks, did you inventory all the trees? So we know you said a five to 10% infestation?
Five percent, ten, 10% defoliation. So we're pretty confident that that is all the hemlocks or almost all of the hemlocks on those properties.
Okay.
And that defoliation is just sort of an average of for those trees that are infested, how much, how much have they died back already?
Okay. So that does represent at least for these six parcels, what you think is the majority of all the hemlocks and the extent to which they've been infested, I guess. Okay. Two is that there was a discussion, I recall, was it about a year ago maybe or so, where Oxbow came and they actually were engaged with a third party to do some treatment on trees on their property, which I'm assuming is not part of this parcel. So and I think the city, if I remember correctly, committed a certain amount of money to support that effort as well as talking about, and I think began to talk about this too. So I just want to revisit exactly what we had agreed to support Oxbow with and kind of coordinate what that effort is. I think they've gotten some work done already, maybe. Maybe you're aware of it.
I don't know of any specifics.
And this does include, the map is not clear to me at least. So that southern boundary, is that Paramin Road, basically? So the south side of that red line would be Dunridge? Is that right?
Looks like it.
You surround looking?
This is, so there's the pool. Here at the park, Vessel Beach.
You can see.
Yeah.
Probably Campbell Road.
This is Campbell, I think.
Okay.
Campbell, into Lake Shore.
Very good.
So you got a little bit of dog right here, but just.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
Well, yeah, I just had, sorry. So to expand a little bit, the mention of wherever my notes are, here we go, forest management planning. How do we do that? How does that happen? And who does that? I mean, so in a way, this reminds me of what we did with the Mill Foil. We were trying to address an issue and then become proactive about it. And so this is very much the similar thing. So as you suggest, forest management, I don't, how does that happen?
Well, I mean, my gut reaction would be like the Eurasian Mill Foil, which kind of fell under the Harbor Authority to make recommendations. To me, this would seem a natural fit for Parks and Public Works.
Okay.
You know, a forest management plan. I see Scott, I see Helen and Scott nodding.
Of the many things.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Brian.
A comment and a question. First, the comment. I'm thrilled that Alleghan County is stepping up to the plate to assist with treating the HWA bug. When I first arrived, I heard some concerns. When I first arrived about three years ago, I heard a lot of concerns about HWA bug, and we had to work with Ottawa County. Now that has changed, Alleghan County has been better resourced, and now they're able to provide more assistance. I'm glad to have Mr. Tausma here. And then also, I just, the question would be like, how important is this for the state overall? And as far, as far as providing something like a fire block as far as the HWA bug, I know it's more important up north, but I know that if you can treat it further south, that's helpful. I mean, if you could just provide a few comments on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I can speak to like a statewide effort. I do think that that is how the state's invasive species program has been approaching it and is sort of moving from north to south in the hopes that that will sort of create, like you said, a fire block for infestation, future reinvestation.
Great, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian?
No, this is great. I'm glad we're tackling it.
Yeah, no.
It has to be done.
Yeah, I mean, part of the appeal of our forests is we are in the transition zone. You know, we are in that zone between pure conifers and hardwoods, and it's actually quite a unique ecosystem. So hopefully other entities at the state and local level will, will take this as seriously as I think, personally, I think we should. So, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
That takes us to item six B, the fire budget. It's on page seven of your packet. I'll kick things off. I just wanted to thank the Fire District for hosting a public meeting on Monday. Myself, Russ Garn, and Helen were all able to attend. Peter's here as well, who was, who was, of course, at the meeting. And, you know, very Reader's Digest version for your benefit, and I'll let Peter discuss it more, is this year's millage increase, point three mils, is predominantly directed toward staffing. And I'll just speak personally, I'm sympathetic to the issues the Fire Department is facing, getting staff, maintaining staff, a number of the issues they are facing around affordability of housing, competition for employees and talent are things that I think we can relate to here as, as a city. But with that, I probably should turn it over to Peter just to go through the highlights.
So Scott basically brought it up. It's it's three tenths of a mil, then it's probably out of that increase of of the increase of the millages, seventy-five percent plus is all going to just go between wages, benefits, training, extra gear, and it's just, I think they're just in a tough, and it's just not us. It's everywhere. I know the chief in South Haven, we have a position that's open right now. Usually in the past, they've had up to fifteen candidates. They've got four. So it's just not, I don't know if anybody had any particular questions on that.
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah. Peter, on, on average, what are they looking at as far as employee increases, or what did they do this year, or what are they looking to do next year?
You mean like wage increases? The full-time, the full-time career people, they're unionized, so they have a union contract that's through this year, and I think it's anywhere. It's all based on performance. It's anywhere from three percent. I think up to highest is seven percent based on whatever their title or position is in that. As to the paid-on call, you know, usually some years they increase all those rates, some years they don't. Last year, they increased everything like five percent across the board for the paid-on call, the people that are, and that's only for the fire and EMT. Like, I know Greg had talked about they pay everybody like four dollars an hour, the paid-on-call people that basically you're going to stay at the station for a 12-hour shift at night and during the weekends when they don't have people around. So that's been the same rate for probably the last four or five years. But they get that four dollars an hour plus any calls they run, then they get the hourly rate when they run a fire or a medical call. So the union guys, they should have one more, the career full-time, everybody's is under the union contract or the CBA collective bargaining agreement through one more year.
Do they do something this year around 10% as far as wages or, or no? Do I have that wrong?
No, I would, wage increase, no. I'm not, well, I can't, well, oh, this current year we're in right now, yeah, it was probably more, yeah, it was probably 10 to 12% on the career guy.
Excellent.
Because we're trying, Greg was trying to get their wages up comparable and to retain them. So, yeah, so this current year, that would be correct. It was probably 10 to 12% on the full-time career people. And I think all the paid-on-call hourly rates were around five, I think we're like five percent with this current year when right now.
And if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, this would support three new staff?
Three, three new full-time people with, you know, wages, benefits, everything else that they have. So, and that would be the 24-hour, you know, so they got, there's include, there's six, there's the chief and six full-time people right now. Three of the full-time people are on 24-hour shifts, and so these other three new peoples would be on 24-hour shifts too.
Mayor, so thank you, Peter. One of the messages that came across, a lot, cross loud and clear to me on Monday was just, as Peter mentioned, this ongoing across the state as far as being able to attract talent and to be able to pay talent and then the folks that you have to keep them. And the wage, the wage-salary studies that have been done basically show that we have a ways to go with a number of people. So it's, I appreciate that. I also appreciate that probably for the first time, you're looking at a staff in the Fire Department that might actually, by adding three, give some folks the ability to take some time off, which, you know, stuns me, but it's true, and it's nice to be able to allow that to happen. So, you know, I think they're struggling with what we all are struggling with, whether it's in municipal government or even in private business, is that you, you need to pay people what they're worth. So I really appreciate the meeting Monday. It was an hour well spent. It was very informative. What I liked the most, it was a room full of folks being able to ask questions freely, which I really appreciated. And everyone, it seemed across the board, had some good questions to ask. So that was well worth the time.
Anything else from, from the council? Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I would just add, I just want to, I'm very grateful to the department, the work that they've done, and, and I went off on a little bit of the old man speech at the meeting on Monday because I have perspective of what this place used to be like and where we are today. And I'm just grateful that we have what we have here in this community. It's just, it's, it's beyond what I think we can find anywhere else in terms of our size community and the services that we have. What came, what, what came to me during this meeting was that this is being responsibly managed financially as well as operationally. And two is that there, our departments, like any others, is that there's a struggle because it's evolving. I mean, there's, there's a point that we're at right now here in the city where it's becoming more of a medical service as opposed to a fire service, but you still need to have the fire services completely staffed and trained because when a structural fire happens, you need to be ready for it. But I see an effort made at a number of different levels to evolve with what's going on out, out here. And, and I just, I couldn't be more pleased with the work that they're doing and look forward to supporting this budget on Monday night.
Great. Any other council member questions, comments?
If I may, I did have a comment because one of the things that I talked to Peter about and gosh, who else did? Oh, to Dan Fox. One of the things that I think that if you hadn't dug into it before, when they're asking for like the budget increase, and you're looking at like, okay, for Sagatuck City's portion, a hundred thousand dollars, I think it's important that the the constituents know that doesn't a check that we just write out of our general fund and hand over. That is for them to have a tax increase, basically, that they've already got this ability to tax up to 10 mils. I think that that would be a logical question that if I were a constituent that I would have. And so it's not something that we're just handing over. It's going to be an increase. It's going to come out of the tax base. The Fire Department has the authority to do that already. I think that they come to us for transparency and all of that, but they've already got the ability to do this, to raise the taxes. We already passed through for that increase, and I think it's important for the citizens to understand that.
Yeah, no, I appreciated them, you know, being so transparent about it. And also, I appreciated having our peers, Douglas and the township there, and one of my takeaways, it wasn't really the focus of the meeting, but there really is an appetite for further collaboration and cooperation. At least that was what I took away from the meeting, and I, I'm, I would welcome more of that, frankly.
Fire and safety, I think, is an obvious way. And then I also, I'd suggest DPW, PBW, you know, the Public Works and the, and the parks. We're all in this together with the sister communities.
I agree. Yeah. Great. Thank you, Peter. That takes us to item six C, road maintenance update on page 21. John, are you or Scott going to tag team this one? Okay, yeah. All right.
Hello. So we've got a lot going on as far as road project updates. So John and I are going to cruise through about, we're about six, six to eight items for you guys, just to get you up to speed on where we're at with currently with road construction for the this season. So the first, the first item is going to be spillway work. This, I think you've probably heard about this before, but we've got two different areas of the city that are in need of spillways, the first being Oval Beach Park. You know, what was it about four, maybe five years ago? By now, we had the parking lot resurfaced. So we have this very large non-porous surface with no real way for water to get directed. So every time we get a decent downpour or rain, it erodes the, the west side of the main north parking lot of the beach. So where we, we have to go back out there with our front-end loader and fill everything back in with sand so it doesn't undermine the base of the parking lot. So we discussed a solution for it, and we think that we're, we're ready to move forward with essentially milling a strip, two-foot-wide strip off of the west edge of the parking lot, starting at the very south end of that, the main parking lot, and then go about halfway north. And we'll, we'll mill that out and then add about a three-inch-tall valley gutter to the shoulder, so that'll direct the water to a new spillway that we'll have installed, which will be kind of armored with some limestone, limestone riprap. So at the very least, the water will get directed there. If we do have any washout issues, it'll be on a more gradual area of the beach instead of the, the very steep incline where it's currently going. Second area, we've all know about the, the stormwater issue at Mason and Maple Street by Wendy Colson's house. I've had several discussions with her, and I think that she would be more than welcome to see us move forward with adding three spillways along Mason Street, one being on the north side of the road, two on the south side. So so we put that work out for bid. We reached out to three different companies, only got one number back. I think maybe it's just too small of a project, I'm not sure. But Bruce's Blacktop got back to us with the number seventy-five hundred for Oval Beach and five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five for Mason Street. They'll work in collaboration with Public Works, so we plan on moving forward with that work, and that'll be completed as soon as possible. So if there's any questions about the spillway work.
Mayor, real quick.
Go ahead.
Have you all worked with them before, Bruce's Blacktop?
Yeah, I've worked with them before. Cal Lake uses them a lot. So they're pretty reputable, and they do good work, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I actually, if, yeah, on the Oval Beach piece, are you going to need to pull any permits from Eagle or any other entity given the proximity to Lake Michigan or the Dune Habitat?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think that because it's a
It's not, yeah, we couldn't come up with anything that would trigger that, or disturbing and putting back, or just that.
Okay, so you did research it then. Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Okay, great. The waters are going down that beach anyway, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, fair question. And then, so with that, there's no more questions. We'll move on to pavement markings. You've all heard me squawk a little bit about how long it takes us to paint our roads every year. So how we've been doing it in the past, just to remind you, is we've had a combination effort between accurate striping and the Sagatuck Public Works Department. So accurate striping would come in, they do all the wide-open straight lines, like the double-yellow center lines, curbs, things of that nature, and shoulder lines. And then Public Works would do the stop bars, crosswalks, parking spaces, et cetera. But it ends up taking us, you know, pretty much all summer. There's been years that we haven't even finished, you know, if we're throwing any sort of wrench in the spokes, like a pandemic or flooding or whatever other challenge, then there's been years that we haven't completed it. So it doesn't make sense for us to move forward in this direction anymore. Accurate striping is no longer to help us, so it's a good point in time for us to kind of reevaluate, which we did, and say, you know, the, the companies that are set up for this type of work, they do it day in, day out. They can come in, crank this workout in a matter of days, a week, I think they said, and then they're done, and we can move on. And it's going to, it's going to allow us to focus more on like more project-based activities versus the routine maintenance. So really looking forward to this one for Public Works. So getting a number for it wasn't as easy as I thought, so we had to pull in the pros. F&amp;V came in and they did an inventory of what all lines that we had. That way, I could, we could take that inventory list and submit it, put it out for bid. So it went out to bid May 11th. We received two bids. They were very different numbers. Ace Parking Lot, or Ace Parking Lot striping, they came in just over thirty thousand dollars, and then the next highest bid was PK Construction, one of the largest ones in the state, and they were upwards of ninety thousand dollars. So we're like, okay, we really like Ace a lot, but let's move forward with some, some reference checks. So you've seen work. You've driven on their work before over in the city of the Village of Douglas. They use them along with multiple other municipalities, so parchment, Kalamazoo, Galesburg, and they actually worked for us just yesterday, I think it was, for the crosswalks out front here. So they've been easy to work with thus far. So an award is recommended to Ace in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, four hundred, or thirty thousand, four hundred and six dollars and ninety-five cents. With contingencies, construction and engineering, we recommend the budget for the construction phase to be thirty-seven thousand dollars. Yes.
Yeah, thanks for being here today and updating us on this. So reading through this scuffle work request that includes tracing all of the pavement markings in the city, excuse me, including on-street parking and municipal parking lot, that's clear. Does it also include curb marks? Because there's a lot of curbs at intersections and so forth that are normally painted yellow to ensure that people don't park in intersections. Is that included in the bid as well?
Yes, it is included. Public Works, we're still going to keep our paint machine. We're going to take care of some of the smaller areas. You know, these, these operations are kind of large moving convoy operations that are best suited for like straightaways. So we're starting to do the, like the Oval Beach parking lot, the Culver Street parking lot, in-house, those types of parking spaces, so.
Mr. Mayor, a question slash comment, which is, for the expanded outdoor dining areas, are we going to avoid the, not have those restaurants break those down and have to put them back up for the, for the striping? What are your thoughts on that?
Fair question. I want that. However, I think it'll just inconvenience everybody too much, so I'll just, we'll just, we won't make them do that. I think we'll just move forward with it. There's not that many spots we can I was grabbing a little bit because it'd been a few years since those areas have been painted, but I'm over it already. And so we're still just, we'll just let, let, let the Yoda continue the way they you and some, you lose some. I'll pick my battles, and that's not, that's not one I care that much about, so.
No, I can.
I will look at them.
It's not like we had a debate about this or anything. Thought I heard a date. What's the start and expected?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm excited to see that work get done, and so timely too, you know, and I didn't even, I think they emailed. Yeah, I'm excited to see that work get done and so timely too, you know, and I didn't even, I think they emailed me yesterday and said that they were, they were doing the crosswalks out here and. And I saw the email today and it was already done and they came in and I don't even know. What time exactly they got here, but that's that's great. That's what you want out of your painting company.
Yeah, sure.
Um any, any other questions about?
Mr. Ryan, so you'll you'll have this for us to vote on on Monday.
Scott, are you excited about the amount of road road roadwork that's going on or how do you feel about it?
I love it. I I think it's, I think we're being fairly aggressive about it this year, um which I I um. I will talk about that in the next category because it's a hitter. So it's it's there's a. A financial investment on the city's part for this next one too, but I I think everyone's on the same page as far as infrastructure, just let's get it going, so. Um so the next topic is the asphalt repairs. So what we're talking about is basically just like the mill and overlay work, just milling out. Um certain sections of road that are in rough condition um and replacing it with with new um HMA asphalt, so. Uh which is hot mix asphalt, so um. We we did kind of a unique thing at Public Works. We started by, I just assigned each, you know, everyone at Public Works kind of works in teams of a couple people. Um so I each team went out into the city and just kind of did like an an inventory of of and and ultimately gave me a recommendation of what. What they identified to be rough sections of road that were worthy of uh mill and fill. Uh so with the public work staff, we all kind of collaborated uh our lists and then uh John and I worked together and uh. Uh agreed on certain areas of town that were worthy of it. Um I'll go through them really quick. Uh one of the bigger ones is gonna be Spear Street. In between uh Water and Butler. Uh initially, I went down there to just do like a small section of it, but it's like all spider cracked. And so it's like, there's no good way to cut. A straight edge. It's all worthy of getting milled. So we're planning on doing that whole section of road, which is a big part of this cost. Um another one is Griffith Street in between Francis and Mary. As you go up the hill, there's like the valley gutters on each side of the road. They're gone. Um so the 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 pothole patching that we do just doesn't hold up. We plow it away every year. Um Francis Streets, uh that's gonna be in between Elizabeth. And roughly, what is it, Grand? There's two sections. Uh I I think the property does is in front of like five fifty Francis, if I remember. Uh there's two areas that we'll just we'll cut out and uh and lay new asphalt up there. Hoffman Street between Grand and Elizabeth, there's a a section there. Um Grand Street, there's a new construction house near the intersection of Mason and Grand. That. Construction really did a number on our road, which is not their fault. Our road was not good to begin with, so uh but that certainly accelerated it. Um and then where am I? Oh, and then there's three sections of Park Street. You know, we really feel, you know, there's such a. There's so much discussion around Park Street and the amount of work that we could potentially be doing or not do on Park Street that. Um for the time being, until we really get a a concrete bearing on. Uh what it is that we all want to see on Park Street happen, we're just gonna go ahead and and mill some of the rough sections. Um and and get that road taken care of and um so that's pretty much the summary of the asphalt repairs. Um we put a bid out since it was a lot of work. Bid opened up May eleventh, uh we received two A-one asphalt um. Came in on top, which were in line with the engineer's uh estimate. Uh A-one is also pre-qualified with M dot, which is great. Um and then the award is recommended to A-one in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents. Um including contingencies, construction and engineering, uh the recommended budget uh for the construction phase would be a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for that project. Uh and then if approved, that work would also take place in June. Um any questions about the mill and overlay work? Yes.
Yeah, thanks again. Uh I'm as excited as Mr. Herbert is about street repairs. I mean, I I live for this stuff. This is and it's funny because. That Spear Street stretch, I don't think that's been paved since my dad was on council. That was a while ago. So it sorely need to get some a lot of use. There's a lot of boat trailers, as you know, and so that's a very heavily used stretch of street. And it's funny because the other night, my wife and I were walking down Griffith, down that stretch you're talking about and. She looked, she said, when's the hell's the last time the city's done anything with a street? So the fact that it's here, excellent, your team's doing a great job in terms of identifying the needs. The only thing I would ask is there could be some way to maybe carve a space out, because when I was a kid, we used to, there used to be a path we could walk up to because there's no sidewalk. Find a way, because there's a lot of people that walk down that street, ton of people. So find a way that we maybe make some pedestrian. I I I don't know, no sidewalk discussion, but you know what I'm saying is there's a lot of people walk down that street. So I'm very happy that's game, take a look at.
Yeah, sure.
So, thank you.
Just to make the road feel wider just by resurfacing it because Scott mentioned that that valley gutter on both sides is.
I'll tell my wife that. Her voice was heard.
I mean, so go go ahead, Garnet. Uh so I'm assuming we'll get notification out to like everyone and their brother since all of this impacts. Everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be, we'll be sure to to send it out heavily, so.
And you said this work is gonna be done in June and when are we worried about Park Street in June and?
Always a concern. Um the those types of details, uh you know, I I think we really encourage people to work in the evening hours. Uh in the we in the very evening hours. Um it's always a concern, but really, you know, Park Street. You know, uh when Lake Michigan warms up in July and August, that's when we're seeing the most uh heavy traffic in those areas and while Lake Michigan's still kind of cold and. Um we're, we're gonna go with it.
If I may too, I saw Douglas did um Lakeshore last year. Um where they dug it up, did all the same thing and it was s- summer and people are up and down, so people figure it out. It just, it needs to be done and there's just.
I just know how narrow it can get and you just, you know, worry about still people being able to get around, but I'm assuming they're working on that.
It's gonna be a fast process of these two. It's it's.
Good, that's great.
Great. Um anything else for the team?
That's great.
I'll just be back on. Scott mentioned that these are all worthy candidates and is not gonna say that there are not plenty of other worthy candidates. I I think Scott. These projects are hard because, you know, where do you stop? Anywhere we draw the line, there's there's bad stuff, be honest. This is kind of the. The worst of the worst of the worst right now that we're just trying to, you know, address now. The other point I would make is that this is kind of a balance between uh the investment that we're making and. Uh recognizing that we might be trenching through a lot of this new past fault uh to do water services and all the things in the future. This is really just kind of. Short term, let's take care of these worst areas, make make them a lot more passable and.
There were a couple of other areas that I wanted to, that you know, that John and I talked about and he reminded me uh very nicely that uh. They they have bad water uh infrastructure underneath, so it really. Knowing that there's a bad water, like Elizabeth Street, we've been getting a lot of complaints about uh Elizabeth Street, uh clearly from the high school traffic, but. You know, there's a section of it that has bad water main, so it doesn't make sense for us to put nice new asphalt on top of it. But also they're still doing construction uh like crazy, so it, you know, it it really. We're getting complaints, but there's not a whole lot that we can be doing about it at this point in time until that construction's done and we fix the water main underneath it, so.
Probably worthy of some type of communication out through our email blast, just to kind of help the community understand the strategy behind the decisions, yeah. Um thank you guys. I I think I think that covers it. Oh, okay, keep going then.
Uh yeah, asphalt repairs and then the next topic is crack sealing. That's not gonna be until a fall project like September, October. Um so that's, again, that's when you're you're filling in roads that are in good enough condition worthy of crack sealing, so you're you're. Doing the preventative maintenance before the road really starts deteriorating, so. Um and in which case, we'll just go through, uh like Perryman was rebuilt that long ago. That's an example of of one that we're, we plan on having crack sealed, so Perryman. Park Frederick Street, Water Street, Holland North, Culver Lake, Blue Star and Elegant Street. Um the bid package is currently or it's currently out for bid uh with a due date of June twenty-first and. It should be somewhere in the ballpark of twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars for that work. Um to be done in the fall, so I will stop talking and turn that over to Mr. Moxy for the rest.
Try to be efficient. Um next project we wanted to talk about is the West East Tackin Taylor and now adding Maple onto that, at least North Maple. For for those of you that uh didn't see it in the status report before, now we we really looked hard uh with staff at at that north piece of Maple Street as we were designing. These other streets uh because it is in such bad condition, it's underwater uh various times of the year. Uh we looked at two different options. We looked at kind of a mill and fill action, just kind of a Band-Aid, get us some more years out of it option, and then we looked at. A full-blown, you know, the right thing to do, a reconstruct, raising it up out of the, out of the, you know, the muck basically. Uh and the cost difference was such that we said it's it's just worth, let's, let's do this. It's part of a bigger project, so we're gonna get some economy of scale. So what we're looking at doing on that north section of Maple is basically from the lift station there to North Street, that that worst area, the valley there. Um again, raising it up, rebuilding it from the ground up, you know, with good engineered and fill materials, no longer will it have, you know, the. Whatever is underneath there that um we find. Design is complete uh for all all five of those streets. We're we're done with design. Uh our permit has been turned into Eagle because that north section of Maple Street is in the flood plain, so we need, we need their buy-in. Had some initial conversations with them already, so we're expecting that to go pretty smooth. Uh we're ready to go out for bids essentially with this one, targeting kind of fall construction, so uh assuming that's what you folks would like to do with it. Uh we'll, we'll get it out for bids here pretty soon. We've talked with staff about maybe some kind of a public workshop. Um but just talking to Scott uh today, we we sent out a mailer to everybody in the project area. I don't know that we got a whole lot of response. I think it's pretty straightforward. Uh we did talk to a few residents that did have concerns already. So I don't know that that's a worthwhile endeavor. I don't, I think we might be sitting here on our own actually if we did that, so we're ready to go. With the, with the scope that we've added uh both at North Maple Street and uh we kind of expanded some of the storm sewer work that we're doing on those other four roads, at least three of the four. Um to to the original estimates we put together, we're doing some things right at um Mason Street. As we started looking at what was out there and hearing from DPW about some of the issues that they're having, we we designed storm sewer going up those roads basically. And it serves two purposes. It gets the water off the road so that we're not prematurely deteriorating that, you know, where the water flows along that asphalt curbing. Uh we're we're removing some of that water, getting it underground, but then at the same time, we're using some enhanced catch basins. We're using. We call them leach basins because they allow the water to soak into the ground. It's it's basically a perforated catch basin in a huge bed of stone to help. Try and reduce some of that flow of water. Again, that's making it to that Mason Maple inner uh intersection. So we're hoping between the spillway work and this work, we're really gonna do some some good uh for that, for that area. So current engineer's estimate, after we got everything on paper, we're thinking about a half million dollars um all in. We had kind of three to four hundred thousand uh earmarked in the CIP. Um so by the time you you make those adjustments for the stuff we've added, we're we're still right in line with what we had um there. I'm seeing a lot of nods, so I I think the the next step would be, we'll, we'll get it out for bids. We'll come back to you obviously when we have bids in hand. And then you can, you can make a formal decision on on what you want to do with that. Any questions on that project before I?
Yeah, thanks, John, for being here today. Uh so best case scenario would be bids come in, projects awarded would be construction this year, fall.
September, October is the plan. Yep, yep.
Anything else?
Yeah, just actually, it's a question for Peter. Um I saw him starting to do math. Are we good as far as budgetarily?
Yep, the construction, once again, once you add contingencies, engineering probably closer to six hundred, but we'll. Get you better numbers when we have bids in hand.
Uh just generally, how is the bidding process going? It seems like uh things are working a little bit better.
Yeah, it's it's still a bit of a curveball. That's a great question. Um we got two bids on both of the kind of little maintenance things. I was a little nervous about both of them. Because they're kind of rushed jobs and and that seems to be the thing that triggers, you know, we don't get bids because we're kind of pushing. Um it's loosening up. Hopefully we'll get three to five, you know, a little bit closer to normal. In the old days, we would get six to ten. So we're we're getting there, but we're. Still a little challenging. The more flexibility we can give, getting it out for bids quickly so that they have time. Fall construction seems to be good. There's, there's contractors I'm talking to that are still looking to fill up their fall, so that helps us too.
Great. Okay, so flexibility scheduling out.
Yeah.
And you've had good response on so even some of these shorter term.
Yeah.
Bids.
Yeah.
Great.
The material costs, the labor costs, they are what they are, but the more flexibility we can give somebody so that they can fit it in and and it, you know. Fills a role in in their schedule, that that's where they.
Well, it seems better than a year or two ago.
For sure. Oh, yes.
Okay.
Much, much.
Glad to hear that.
Great. All right, um. Credit to uh Russ, made sure this was was on our talking points, category B, M dot category B grant. Um I think most of you are on council at this time last year. Uh wa- was the last time we submitted for this uh program. It's a great program. It's one of the only ones out there that provides funding for local roads, uh which is why it's very competitive. We've tried uh several times. I counted at least three times. We've tried this one twice with Douglas uh for Campbell Road. Um and then last year, we applied for kind of a patching and slurry ceiling project on on a handful of uh strategic streets in town. Um. These projects are getting funded. Uh there's a lot more demand than there is funding in there, but um I personally had uh six clients that submitted last year. Two of them got um awarded. They happened to be kind of two smaller villages that have some financial um need in there. That is part of the scoring, but it's. It's weighted less than some other programs, so I I think it's it's still obviously worth going after. We have a few ideas. Uh applications are due June fifteen. Um so we're, we're gonna make some decisions here uh pretty quick and have a. Uh resolution for you at at your June five um workshop, at least to present it. I won't be able to make your Monday meeting when you approve it, but. Uh the ideas we've had so far, uh first one would be Maple Street. Uh that's a known need. This would be everything south of what we're doing as part of the other project. Well, um it meets a couple of different criteria uh in this grant program. One, it involves multiple agencies. It's not just us, the township's on the other side. Uh two, it involves water main uh replacement. That's been a known need for a long time. And then uh three, we can kind of take more of a maintenance approach with it instead of reconstructing the whole road, basically just resurface it afterwards, so. We think that's a good one. Uh again, it's gonna need some buy-in from the township, but we we think if we come to them and say we've got a quarter million dollar grant for this. You know, how can we work together to get this done? We think that's a pretty good selling point. The other thought on Maple Street is that is in our uh current application that we have uh to Eagle. Uh for water main work, so this would kind of be either a backup plan or an enhancement um to that project. Um so I I don't think it hurts to have both irons in the fire uh with that. Uh second option uh we discussed would be kind of the West East Taylor Tackin project that meets. A lot of the same criteria. What it would mean is we would have to delay that project uh to twenty-four or twenty-five, obviously twenty-four. It's on the shelf, it's ready to go. Um that would be another option. Uh I think it's a little bit less attractive to that program because it doesn't check quite as many boxes, but that was another thought. Uh the current plan for that one is is local funds, so um we have some flexibility on when we do it. Um the third one would be kind of going back to that uh kind of road maintenance approach. Pick, pick five streets or, you know. Our our favorite five streets and do kind of a a patching slurry seal just to kind of renovate the the asphalt. Uh those were the three ideas we had, certainly open to to direction or or other ideas or or whatever you folks have.
Just that's important to you. Just a question on Maple Street, uh isn't there also a stormwater component that you want to address in that request?
There, there is and and this, this grant basically wrote, M dot considers road and drainage kind of uh inter- interlocked.
Okay, good.
It's, it would be eligible cost to do something like that.
Wonderful. Great. Great. Anything else for the team?
John, Scott, great job. Just really, really appreciate the work. Thank you.
I have one more for you.
But wait, there's more.
I I already gave a preview. Monday night, we will be back to to um to talk about that Eagle um grant application. I'll have the 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 larger team here. Um there is a council resolution that goes with that, so that'll be in your packets. Um and it's uh it's not a public hearing, but it's a public meeting, so there will be an opportunity for for public to comment on it. Any um written comments that uh the city receives, uh it's it's printed out and it's downstairs and it's available, so any written comments will go through, but. Stay tuned, that'll, that'll happen Monday night. Then um Scott and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about just looking at the the years out, twenty twenty-four and beyond. Um a lot of this is gonna be influenced by what comes back from Eagle. We'll know this fall whether we get funded through that program, whether there's a grant component. Um so a a lot of this is still kind of uh just kind of what if. Um now, but just wanted to talk through some of the things that are on our CIP in some of those later years. Um Mill Street uh is one that we want to talk about. That's uh mostly gravel. Um upgrading that to more of a a city street. It's the only through street that's gravel uh that I'm aware of at least, so that was a candidate. Um Park Street, again, depending on what the vision for Park Street is, so definitely working with um. The committee on that and the the work group on that to to figure out the vision. I just met a couple of weeks ago with uh the Holiday Hill folks and. They're becoming more and more concerned about the the hill um and and some of the erosion that's going on, both uh. Uh upstream of the road and downstream of the road and and so it's becoming more of a more of a need in that, that could be a project all its own, just dealing with that. Section from Perryman to Van Dolson there. Again, more slurry ceiling uh pavement uh restoration work that we can do the better. Um so we've, we've got a lot of those kind of intermediate roads, the roads that are too far gone to crack seal, but not enough far gone to. Um, so we've, we've got a lot of those kind of intermediate roads, the roads that are too far gone to crack seal, but not enough far gone to, to come in in Mill and Phil. Um, so we've got a lot of those kind of picked out to do a, uh, project of that nature again. Did I miss anything?
You, you got it. Okay.
Wow. That's what we're up to.
No, thanks. Thanks. Thank you guys. Thank you.
I feel like we should clap.
Yeah. Okay, we are at six D.
Yeah.
This one, it's not in your packet, but our manager has a large collection of things written on napkins, various IOUs. Um, verbal promises. So fourth of July celebration update from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll be brief. I know that some of you, uh, desire to get out of here by five o'clock. Good luck. Um, so, uh, what the council discussed at the last meeting, uh, was a hybrid event for the fourth of July celebration. So good news is that we were able to get the fireworks vendor that we have used in previous years, Night Magic. They came back around. They, we received a proposal from them. It's a, it's, 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 it's a good proposal. Um, around $15,000 and they're familiar with the coast guard permits, the DNR permits and the, the people that operate the barge and the logistics of the loading zone and all the other things that go into a fireworks event. Um, got an excellent proposal from the laser vendor, um, laser encore. Um, and again, the idea is to have both lasers and fireworks going on at the same time. Um, received a verbal quote for the barges. Um, still trying to work on that one to get the price down. Um, but that's with a, a local vendor who typically provides the barges, still working on that. Music is still a thing. Um, excellent, uh, DJ. Um, and I'm going to move forward with that. Uh, with every good DJ, you need some, a stage and some lighting. So working on that as well. Um, had a meeting today with OXPO, uh, School of Art for creating a poster. And, uh, that meeting went well. We're trying to create like a very iconic, kind of a collectible poster. So really trying to leverage our relationship with OXPO School of Art. They seem to be pretty enthusiastic about it. Um, so that's on the expense side. Right now, I mean, I'll just, I'll put it out there. We're, we're looking at around 65 to $70,000 for this event. Yep. Um, on the revenue side, the city had committed to 10,000. Um, my ask for the City Village of Douglas is 4,000, uh, same for the township. Uh, the CVB, I go in front of the, their board tomorrow, which I'm on the board, which is a little awkward, but, um, so I'm asking for 10,000, uh, from them. Um, and then with private sponsors and donations, um, they're, well, sorry, in addition to that, Sadaba, I'm going to see if they have any funds. I'm going to ask for 2,000. I don't know if they have any money or not. Um, and then the remainder will need to come through, uh, sponsors and donations. So we're reaching out to multiple businesses, uh, private donations, which we've already received some. Um, and so we're just going to keep plugging away at that and happy to answer any questions.
I'll, I'll start. I think it would be beneficial for the council to get a handle on what the delta is right now between costs and, and, and what revenue we expect to make.
My prediction is, my prediction is the delta is currently 17,000.
Okay.
Mr. Man, Mr. Manager.
Go ahead.
So you gave us a total of 65 to $70,000, but the only number I heard before that was 15,000. Can you tell me how we get to 60 to 70?
Sure. So fireworks at 15, yep. Uh, laser show at 20. Uh, the barges are at 8,000. As I mentioned, I'm going to try to work on that. That's four barges, two for the fireworks, two for the laser show. Um, the music, the DJ, 5,000. I predict that the stage lighting, um, will come to 20,000, trying to work on that. So that's both the rental for the stage and then the lighting. So we can work.
You and I should have a conversation.
We'll work on that.
Separately, um, because I can tell you that I've got some different pricing for the Venetian festival.
Wonderful. You love to talk.
$1,000 for stage and lighting is.
Okay. Well, we can work on that. And music, uh, sorry, the speaker system as well.
We have a speaker system for that.
Oh, perfect. Great. Hey, let's talk. Um, and then OXPO, uh, just for the artists. Um, design itself, just I plugged in a thousand, uh, and talking with OXPO, they said maybe it's closer to 1,500. But I also just had mentioned to them, like, if they can sell the posters as far as I'm concerned and keep all the revenue. Um, so again, they're, they're going to try to do something very cool and iconic. And so we can use that for promoting the event. Uh, we have to make quick footwork on all of this stuff. Um, so that's how I got to 69,000. Glad you know how to get that number lower. We.
Well, the timing is the thing, right? Like, so now I don't know. I have no idea. I mean, I know that I've got vendors, but I don't know what, assuming they're busy on fourth of July, but we can find out.
Okay, great. Um. So DJ Coughlin Park?
Correct.
Stage, stage Coughlin Park. Okay. And so that creates a venue for sponsors to advertise.
Correct.
So you, is that part of your plan to approach advertisers?
Yep.
Well, you know.
Yes.
Nothing goes with selling cannabis like fireworks and laser shows.
Just to. We reached out to, uh.
Isn't going to have like, are you guys going to do beer tents and stuff? Or what do you, is it just going to be social district? You walk around and figure it out on your own?
Yeah, I'm trying to stay away from alcohol, um, so that we don't have to set up fencing and all the other logistics as far as the, 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 so we have to create a whole incident action plan with the sheriff's department. So there's tons of logistics that go into that. And so I'm just going to say, when we promote this, that there's multiple restaurants that have social district licenses and please go ahead and do not bring alcohol, but you can purchase alcohol at these places and walk around the city.
Yeah. What's, um, what's kind of the timing to get some of these contracts locked in? I'm, I'm wondering when we need to, if we need to have a hard discussion in a few weeks saying, you know, it'd be nice to do it all, but we, we, we've got a shortfall. We're going to have to cut something or do you, are you going to need something sooner? Before we've got, you know, all the eggs in the basket, if you will.
What I would recommend, the first thing, so we have a, um, proposal from Night Magic for the fireworks. Let's lock that in.
Yes.
Laser show. Let's, I'd recommend that we lock that in barges. I want to confirm that. Those are the most important things. Uh, the DJ, uh, we got a solid proposal from him. I'd say lock that in. Uh, we'll work on stage and lighting and, and the music system. That's a little bit of an unknown at the moment. Um, and then it looks like OXPO School of Art is, is ready to move with us as well. But the most important ones, fireworks, lasers and the music.
A question. Um, on the other side of the state, usually the county, the counties have stages that different munis use. Is that a thing over here? Does anybody?
Doubtful.
Never.
Yeah.
I experienced.
Asking or maybe.
Question, but.
Ottawa.
Well, we'll reach, yeah, maybe I'll, we'll reach out to, to our, maybe just.
Allegan County Fair. Yeah, it just one, yeah, Allegan County Fair or. Their own setup there, but I don't know.
Everyone's having the event on.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. True, true.
Um, any, any, any thoughts from the council? Any reactions of sticker shock or let's do a party or?
Sticker shock, but I think fireworks first, get that nailed down as you suggest and get down what we need to get down there. We'll discuss hard numbers if we need to at some point.
Okay.
Just work the phones. That's what we all need to do, right?
Yep, please.
Garn, Lauren, Helen, any other?
I obviously have sticker shock. I, I mean, I am going to look into a couple of things. I, I'm concerned about the, the tight timeframe and it's the fourth of July, but, uh, I'm certainly going to make a couple of phone calls. So, I mean, we can talk about that. I just, I mean, people are, you know, we squeeze people a lot for things every time we, I mean, every time we do something around here, we got to pass the hat. It's frustrating and, um, unfortunately we don't have a DDA or anything like that. I don't know. So yeah, that I thought we were going to be at like $35,000. We're thinking like, oh, fireworks, the laser show and da, 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 da. Now we're looking at 65, 70K. It's just, it's a lot of money. Um, but, uh, I think that there's, I think that there's some softness in there. So let's see. So let's see.
All right. So I think, I think the consensus of the council is to keep driving forward. If you feel like you're coming short budget wise, we'll probably have to make some hard decisions on some of the, you know, nice options or add-ons, if you will.
Yep, understood.
You, are we good?
Yeah. Appreciate your work on it.
Yeah, no, thanks. It's, no, it's not. Yeah. And we're a long, a long way farther along than we were at our last.
Two weeks ago.
Thank you for that. Um, great. That's 6D covered. Um, we are now at, um, at 6E and, um, yeah, um. If, if anyone does need to be excused from the meeting, I'm, you know, it's fine. And, and Jamie, thank you. And as Sarah, send a thank you for helping out. Um, it takes us to E. This is Ryan Cummins FEMA floodplain ordinance update, page 28. Ryan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure you're sick of getting letters about this, right?
Yeah, yeah. I, when I get letters from the Department of Homeland Security, it does get my attention. So, yes.
Um, yeah. So FEMA has updated the, uh, area flood insurance study, uh, and flood insurance rate maps. Um, so they're actually, um, new digital copies. Uh, we can read them a lot better. Um, they're, they're going to be much more accessible, uh, online. Uh, but they require that since the maps have been updated, their insurance, uh, study's been updated, that we update our, uh, floodplain, uh, management regulations. And so, um, there's been a, a sample ordinance that's been provided by Eagle that was vetted by FEMA that essentially kind of checks all the requirements as far as what we're supposed to have in our actual ordinance. Uh, so for our purposes, uh, we do have a current floodplain ordinance. Um, so we kind of took what, uh, uh, Eagle had recommended. And then also had to include some, some changes to our current ordinance. So the two big changes are obviously just the updates to, um, reference the, the current and updated maps. That'll be in effect, uh, on, on June 21st, 2023. And then, uh, the other recommendation that, that came from, uh, FEMA and Eagle was to, um, instead of having, right now, actually our city clerk has designated the, um, floodplain administrator by ordinance, but then by resolution, the council's designated, designated me as the floodplain administrator. Um, their recommendation, strong recommendation is that the building official actually be the, uh, the, the designated floodplain administrator. And large part because the state construction code, a lot of the floodplain regulations kind of relate to that. Um, talked with Michigan Township Services, uh, they're in agreement with that, that designation, uh, with the understanding that really we're going to continue with our current processes that we have in place. You know, I'm reviewing and flagging, uh, floodplain issues on the zoning end because typically I'm reviewing projects before it gets to the actual, uh, building permit stage. Um, and then certainly, um, they're going to be doing a, uh, an extensive check and review to make sure things comply, um, from a construction code standpoint. So, um, happy to answer any questions.
Right, counsel. Makes sense. No, thanks. Thanks. I'm, yeah. I am happy to not be getting these letters anymore from FEMA.
Um, yeah.
Right. That takes us to, um, to a six F, uh, revocable license grow. That is on page 37 of our packets. I, I just, just to note, just for, for the record, um, we've switched clerks and councilman Gardner had an appointment. So he's departed the meeting at this time. So, which is 503. So. Go ahead. Sorry.
All right, Mr. Mayor, uh, similar to the past meetings, uh, we're just kind of working on, making sure that there's, uh, revocable license agreements for, uh, sidewalk dining. Uh, Grill Cafe has, uh, submitted an application for, um, their sidewalk, um, seating. Um, happy to answer any questions. It's very similar to past meetings.
Anything on this?
Mr. Mayor, just an item of note that the sheriff's department did ask for a list of, of restaurants that have either expanded outdoor dining licenses and/or, uh, revocable permits for outdoor seating. So I'm glad that they're dialed, they're paying attention to, um, this, this situation.
Okay, great. Very good. Um, okay. Anything on grow?
Uh, real quick, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, RC, um, I know that, that sidewalk there on Griffith, you know, we had the narrowness issue come up last time. Were we comfortable with that distance of their seating and the sidewalk that there's enough room for folks to go in there, go in between there?
Were there actual patrons in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, we had to come up at Wix as far as the tables between, close to the door, but, or to the road, and then there enough road on the sidewalk or enough room on the sidewalk. So I want to be fair and make sure.
For these are, I think these are like little two taps. I was walking by it today and they look like little, they're two taps and not those big picnic tables.
Yeah, there's, so they're kind of tables that, that, that sit higher up and it looked like it was more for a kind of a, yeah. It's similar to.
Point. It's a good point.
I'm good. Yes. Okay. Good. Yeah. All right. Um, that takes us, if there's no further questions on that, that takes us to G, revocable licensed tree of life. That's on page 45.
Yep. Very similar to, uh, uh, the previous requests. There's a couple picnic tables that they would like to have approval to, uh, keep on the sidewalks.
Okay. Great. Anything on tree of life juice establishment? Okay, no. Um, this takes us to six H, special event waterfront inventational fine art fair on page 53. Anything we need to know about this one, Ryan?
Mr. Mayor, this is, it speaks for itself.
Okay.
On your agenda for Monday night.
Um, same as previous year?
Correct.
Okay. Same setup.
As far as I know.
Okay. Any questions from council? No. No. Okay. Um, uh, proclamation for Pride Month, item I, that's on page 66, something we've done in past years. Uh, anything, anything we need to know about this, Ryan?
Nope, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We've done this in previous years.
Look forward to signing it. So very good. Anything from council on that? Nope.
Just that it's awesome.
Always. Indeed, indeed. Um, so then that takes us to our last item of, uh, for discussion, uh, rules of procedure amendment, city council, page 68. Um. Jamie flagged this for me that, um, it with the, um, this is for the, Jamie's not here now, but this is for the, um, short-term rental group and the ability to give a report out, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
So basically all this is, is, uh, we need to vote on changes to our agenda. And this would allow us to add, uh, as a sub item under planning, the short-term rental task force, uh, that Lauren is serving as a council rep on, that would just sort of memorialize in our agenda. That, you know, you know, just like when Russ talks about planning or something, you know, that we, we, we go to under that to the short-term rental and then Lauren can update council on that. So that's all the sense. Just, just, you know, we have, we have to vote on changes to the agenda.
Yeah.
So, and for recurring items, that is, so that's, that'll be in the packet for, for Monday. Uh, that completes discussion items. We're now at item seven, public comments. Uh, this is wide open, uh, but do please limit your comments to three minutes and, um, I will open up the floor. Uh, Dave, please, and just state your name and, uh, place of residence for, for the clerk's benefit.
David Swan at three, four, five Griffith. This will surprise each and every one of you. I'm not here to talk about the dunes. Um, so I'm here to request a no parking sign. Um, and, and there are two reasons. Um, and we're like, we're, we live at the corner of Griffith and Maine, as many of you know. Um, so we're looking for no parking signs on Griffith. So there are two large mature trees, um, um, on that strip of grass where people park. Um, there's a maple and there's a beautiful sycamore. Um, if any of you have spent any time on the campus of MSU, there are yard signs all over the place saying no parking under trees while tailgating. And that's because it compresses the soil, um, and it also kills the root systems. Uh, the root systems on both of those trees are exposed in front of our house. So when a, you know, 4,500 pound car or truck parks on them, it, it's really going to damage those roots. Um, so that's, that's issue number one. Issue number two is there's a pedestrian crosswalk. You come up from the public restrooms. Uh, you cross Griffith. Um, if you're heading west and there's a car parked there, somebody driving north on Griffith, um, can't see, um, somebody about to step out in front of them. Um, we've seen some near misses, uh, right there. Um, and, uh, as I was walking down here, as we all do, I ran into a neighbor and the neighbor said, so what are you doing? And I said, I'm going to talk with, to city council about getting a no parking sign. Um, and the neighbor said, I'll be there, uh, just let me know when they're going to put this on the agenda because it's really dangerous. So just wondering what the next steps are. I've, uh, spoken with the Ryans about this and they've suggested that I come here and present.
Thanks for the comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. So I'll take it up with Ryan. Okay. Yeah. Thank you for the nod.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to make public comment? Sarah, do you see anyone on the Zoom with a hand raised? I only see a couple of participants on Zoom. Do you do not? Okay. Well, with that, I will close public comment. Um, we have, I don't believe, do we have any? We have, I don't believe, do we have any correspondents? I don't think there's any in the pack. That takes us to council comment. Helen, would you like to start?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Same.
Real quick, sorry. That reminded me, David's comments, because we used to, I think we put out the crosswalk, whatever those stanchion things. I'm, I'm assuming that those will go up soon because even at Lake Street, it's very dangerous. As my father will tell you, having been hit by a car several years ago there, those are wonderful. Just saying, he was fine. He's tough.
Yes.
Broke the windshield. So that's just reminded.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great reminder. So thanks for that, Garn. Yeah, I, I think. And, and the one by the playground, I think the one by the playground is critical to get between the playground and the, and the bathrooms.
Yeah, that's. We are going to talk about that. I still do want the one for Park Street. We brought that up to have something by the ferry, the chain ferry. That I think would be really helpful and it would make we've got a lot of, a lot of traffic picks up right around that area. People wander off the chain here and they need to get off because the other people are getting on. People are standing around looking. We talked about it at our PPW meeting, but if we're going to be on that topic, I definitely want to throw that in the mix.
And I know, I, I saw Scott and one of the committee members talking about improving sightlines by some judicious trimming to help with that as well. So, yeah, great. That's, I, I have no comments, but I do thank, thank you all. It's a good meeting. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion Louis second Baldwin, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Fun, whatever you're doing, you're going off. Oh, good. It's chilly out there.
Yeah, it's home.
Oh, that's good.
You know, we're still in that fire meeting, like nobody ever did public comment at the end. Nobody ever made a motion to adjourn. Budget meeting.